Good afternoon. I'm Kim Melnick, School Board Chair, and the Administrative Informal and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at four o'clock on this twenty-second day of October. Welcome, everyone. Nice to see everyone. At this time, I'll ask Madam Clerk to please announce the role.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber is Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Kendrick, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems, and presently, no School Board members are online.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so this evening, we'll start with Administrative Matters and Reports. Do any School Board members have anything to report? Ms. Riggs?
I just want to say something about Legislative Committee, and let people know that it's been, we have not had a Legislative Committee meeting, so we have no positions for Virginia Beach City Public Schools yet. I think that, at this point, we usually have something, actually, by August or September, as we all know. And it's because people are unable to be able to be at the meetings. I asked to be the Chair to try to get this thing going, and it hasn't. I just got an agenda put on my desk that the Chair hasn't recommended, but that Ms. Lanetti has. And this is, if you, I need to say this because I'm seeing it more and more. I see it on my Discipline Committee. If you can't be and serve on these committees, you really need to think about running. And I'm saying this to people that are candidates out there running, and I'm saying it to the people sitting up here. We have to put our administration on hold, our students on hold, because we are not meeting. This has gone on too long, and I'm on two of those committees. Been waiting, twiddling my thumbs, waiting to be called and let know, I've asked, even volunteer to be Chair so we can move this along. And I did get something going about the J-Larke Study Committee. But as it is, I know that Mr. Andrews can't even be here for our November meeting on the eleventh to do the presentation when we finally do meet tomorrow, which we only have an hour, because one of our members has to be at another meeting, an hour, to come up with the positions that Virginia Beach City Public Schools need to present to our legislators. I want it to be known that this is unacceptable, and our voters need to know that our people that are serving on this board that are not being present. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. So I'm gonna start this evening, yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry.
For my colleagues, I just passed out an invitation to a scholarship naming reception. It's a fundraiser, and I would appreciate it if you all would take it into consideration. If you want to take one, pass it down.
Oh, for Sister Cities?
For Sister Cities, to raise money for the Scholarship Fund for our Student Ambassador for 2025. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna begin this afternoon with two sign-up sheets. The first is for the meeting with the Superintendent between Friday, November twenty-first and Monday, November twenty-fifth. I'll start that to the left. And the green sheet is school visits with the Superintendent from November first to November twenty-second. We'll switch those as they come back around. All right, and the Board needs to give direction to Dr. Robertson for the streaming of the November sixth public hearing at Bayside Middle School. And so everyone received that email, and since we don't vote electronically, we're gonna talk about that right now. Dr. Robertson?
So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Woodhouse, who's championing this effort for me, to share the dilemma we have and the cost that would be incurred if we wanted to stream that. So Ms. Woodhouse?
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. As I indicated in the email that I sent to the School Board, Mr. Dinn was able to go out and visit Bayside Middle School. He evaluated both the auditorium and the cafeteria for the possibilities of being able to livestream. Due to the fact that many of our older schools were not set up and configured to be able to host those meetings, Mr. Dinn followed back up and indicated that it would probably take his team about two full days, as well as around a thousand dollars for equipment costs. And if you remember, when we transitioned to the Holland Road Annex, the level and extent of work that it took to flip the auditorium, you're in a similar situation, but knowing we were gonna be over there for that long length of time, it was definitely worth it. So in conversations, we thought if the Board was agreeable, we would not livestream the public meeting, recognizing that our constituents could still attend the meeting on November twelfth, hear maybe a summary, a quick summary around what the Board members heard, and still have another opportunity to have their voice heard. So our recommendation, Administration's recommendation, was to not livestream the meeting on November sixth, from six PM to eight PM.
Okay, so I turn to my colleagues for questions or comments. Ms. Kendrick?
Thank you. Thank you so very much, Ms. Woodhouse, and to your team for looking into those options. So could you just share what the other methods are for the public outside of the livestream? So just so they're aware. Thank you.
For that particular meeting, the public meeting, they would have to attend in person. In terms of signing up to speak, we're handling everything as we've done for School Board meetings. So we will advertise it. We will advertise the School Board Clerk's phone number. But also, because the meeting is scheduled from six to eight PM, even those who attend, if there's time left, can still speak without having previously signed up. But also recognizing that we would continue to advertise to the community that if, for some reason, you could not attend that November sixth meeting, you can, as always, email the Board or attend the November twelfth meeting and still be able to speak to the Board prior to the vote.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. So I need, Ms. Owens?
Wanted to, I guess, start it off with, I would be in support of Administration's recommendations there. I think that we, while it would have been ideal to be able to livestream, given the monetary piece of that, the labor piece, I think, hopefully, Board members will be present. We'll be able to hear from our constituents in that district, and we'll still be reading emails that come in, seeing folks in person at the next meeting, and that will allow us to keep things moving at the pace that this deserves. And so I would be in support of keeping things moving for that reason.
Ms. Riggs?
I agree with Ms. Owens. I think we need to, you know, move on with this. We've talked about it for a while. We give them the, our constituents and the public the opportunity to weigh in many different ways in an alternative date. So I, given the cost and the recommendation of our Administration, that this is his job to recommend what is best. I think we should just continue with what we were gonna, what he advises.
Ms. Weems?
Yeah, I agree. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of Ms. Woodhouse and Dr. Robertson to move on with that meeting November sixth, six to eight.
Okay, motion on the floor, second? All right, any further discussion? I'm just really pleased that we're traveling to the Bayside community, so hopefully, that makes it easy, easier for families to join us on November sixth.
Remind you, because it's a full School Board meeting, it'd be nice if six of you to have a quorum to go forward. So please make sure enough of you are available for that meeting to go forward.
Okay, okay, and so seeing no further questions or comments, the voting board is open. Okay, it's not. Sorry? Her motion was to accept Administration's-
Recommendation to meet at Bayside Middle on November sixth, from six o'clock to eight o'clock.
No more discussion? All right, voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes, so the motion, the substitute motion, did approve, did pass.
Okay, that was the only motion? Okay. All right, and so now we will begin this afternoon with, oh, you, okay. Danielle Calucci, I wasn't sure that you were coming up, Chief Academic Officer.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, School Board members, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Danielle Calucci, and I serve as our Division's Chief Academic Officer. This afternoon, it is a pleasure to be with you to share the work of our department and the various offices that serve within the Department of Teaching and Learning. We also refer to our department as DETOL frequently, so if you've heard that acronym, that's what it means. The offices within our department support behavioral, academic, and career pathway growth of our students in alignment with our Division's strategic framework, with the goal of ensuring our students graduate, our student, our schools' future-ready. The Teaching and Learning Framework displayed here illustrates the cyclical process our Division utilizes to plan, teach, and assess our learners. Note the intentional placement of the word "respond" throughout the framework. In order to meet the needs of our students, teachers, instructional coaches, and administrators, we engage in ongoing data analysis to ensure that we are programming and designing instruction to meet the needs of the whole class and the individual learner's needs. Let me begin by presenting the work of two of our offices, Elementary and Secondary Teaching and Learning. These two offices are led by Executive Directors Tom Quinn and Lorena Kelly. On the left, you see the various teams that are part of this, of this group, such as Core Content Area Specialists, Title I Instructional Coaches, Family Engagement, New Teacher Coaches, Pre-K Teams. This team also supports our Division's Math and Literacy Coaches. Behind the scenes, this team's work includes, but is not limited to, writing curriculum assessments, developing professional learning, reviewing legislation for alignment to our resources and practices, managing the immense Title I, Title II, Title IV, and Early Intervention Reading Initiative grants. They also provide training to school-based coaches. You will even find these team members at Distribution Services packing and organizing curriculum materials that need to be delivered to schools. Within the schools, you will see the team co-teaching, co-planning, helping with data analysis, providing student instruction, delivering materials, attending school support meetings with instructional leadership teams and principals, conducting learning walks to provide feedback, delivering school-wide professional learning, and meeting with individual teachers who request support. A couple of recent celebrations related to the work of these dynamic teams in partnership with our schools are highlighted on this slide. We added one more pre-k classroom, for example, this school year, and you all know how important early intervention and access to high-quality preschool is. We also worked diligently on many aspects of the Virginia Literacy Act, and we have already registered approximately twenty-six hundred elementary and middle school teachers in the state's mandated evidence-based literacy instruction modules. These two teams delivered one hundred twenty-eight essential professional learning sessions just during the summer, and they continue to provide customized, school-based professional learning and multiple-division teacher and specialist and administrator trainings throughout the year. Finally, one thousand nine hundred ten students have accessed dual enrollment courses this school year. Let's take a look now at another one of our offices, the Office of Technical and Career Education, led by Dr. Sarah Lockett. As you can see in the yellow field here, this office consists of DETOL team members focused on preparing our students for a wide variety of career pathways within our community. Behind the scenes, this team is busy writing and managing grants, connecting with industry partners to enhance student skills and integrate them into the regional talent pipeline and developing curriculum and resources. They are constantly planning and networking to bring the best opportunities to our school, division, and city, and provide effective resources for implementation. A major focus of their work this school year, in addition to supporting all of the items that we've mentioned, is implementing new curriculum for Tech Ed sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in middle schools. A few of this office's celebrations as of late include upcoming dual enrollment opportunities with the Aviation School of Maintenance and Centura College, which will be presented to all of you soon. In 2025, with support from the Regional Maritime Training System, Virginia Beach City Public Schools will renovate spaces at the Renaissance Academy, adding another welding lab, a crucial step towards careers in shipbuilding. The team is also planning to expand industry training opportunities for high schools in 2026. And the photos you see here highlight the wide range of career-focused options available to our students, from Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow to Culinary to Welding. Skip to page. Now let's talk about our amazing Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. This team is led by Dr. Myers Dob and Ms. Sodamayor. They support special education compliance and specially-designed instruction for students with disabilities aged two to twenty-one years old. Behind the scenes, their critical responsibilities ensure students with disabilities receive special education and related services for success in school and in life. OPEC organizes professional learning sessions for administrators, teachers, assistants, and related service providers on specially-designed instruction and special ed processes, in line with regulatory requirements. Coordinators and instructional specialists also support case management of students served by CSEP in private day schools by attending all of their IEP meetings. This year, the Division is undergoing a VDOE cyclical review process of its provision of special ed, involving a year-long assessment of over five hundred student records and an onsite visit during the second semester for classroom walks and interviews. Within the schools, you will see this amazing team of instructional specialists and coordinators supporting our students with disabilities, attending multiple IEP meetings, providing instructional coaching, and reviewing processes for compliance. Some of the notable recent celebrations of OPEC include our Division meeting ninety-two and a half percent of the requirements on the Part B Results-Driven Accountability Matrix. This is used to assess the Division's performance related to results for graduation and state assessments, demonstration of substantial compliance with indicators, and accurate and timely IDEA Part B submissions. We have recently hired four amazing Virginia Beach City Public School Special Education retirees to provide coaching and compliance support for teachers and administrators. New special ed teaching teams and assistant principals have shared their appreciation for the coaching, extra support, expertise offered, and encouragement this provides to them. The OPEC team delivered numerous professional learning sessions as well this summer, and facilitated several conference sessions. The team supported sixty-eight new special education teachers during new teacher orientation. Finally, the team is working to support the overall expansion of Medicaid beyond just reimbursements for students with disabilities. I want to note, the picture you see here is a picture of our Little Feet Meet last year, which is cosponsored by Virginia Beach City Public Schools and the Special Olympics of Virginia. Let's explore another office. The Office of Student Support Services, led by Mr. Jamison and Ms. Day, supports several critical areas of our Division as well. Counselors, Psychological Services, Behavior Intervention Specialists, Mental Health Resources, Instructional Resources for Avid, Section 504, Homelessness Support, and Student Records. Behind-the-scenes work of this office includes supporting students experiencing homelessness, working with community partners to expand mental health resources, developing Tier One Classroom Behavior Tools, and professional learning for school staff to help address student behavioral needs. The Avid team is always busy, supporting instructional best practices and providing professional learning. This office also includes support for students with Section 504 plans. This team attends meetings, reviews plans, and offers support in schools for the Student Response Team meetings that take place as well. Finally, this office oversees the intense role of secondary summer school programs and the responsibility of processing student records. Allow me to highlight a few of this team's recent celebrations. The Annual Jump Start Event, which several of you attended, supported six hundred thirty-six students who are experiencing homelessness. Children and families left with school supplies, backpacks, food, and other resources from our community partners. The Division also boasts a ninety-six point one percent on-time graduation rate and a thirteen percent decrease in chronic absenteeism, which is a strong focus of this team. We are thrilled to report approximately sixty-six hundred students are enrolled in advanced placement courses currently. When looking at last year's AP data, we want to highlight, we not only increased overall enrollment in AP coursework, but we increased by twenty percent in participation for Black and Hispanic students. And I'd like to also share that with this increase in enrollment, our performance also went up. VB CPS had thirteen hundred twenty-four AP scholars last year, which means we had over thirteen hundred students scoring a three or higher on at least three different AP exams. Additionally, six of our high schools received AP Honorable Awards from the College Board. The Office of K-12 and Gifted Programs is also part of the Department of Teaching and Learning. It includes various K-12 instructional program offices, such as music, art, health, physical education, English as a Second Language, world languages, dual and Spanish immersion programs, and our gifted office. It also includes the Welcome Center, where support is offered to newcomers registering. All of these offices are led by Dr. Crystal Wilkerson. Each small team of experts in their content areas are involved in writing curriculum, developing professional learning, supporting teachers, specialists, and administrators, attending school meetings, and providing instructional coaching for their area. You are aware of the immense amount of work the gifted team has been engaged in as they work to implement the five-year plan. The ESL team is also working hard to support testing and instructional delivery. This year, over five hundred potential English learners have already been screened, with more than four hundred qualifying for services. The Visual Arts and Music Departments, as you will see later when the Salem Rams perform, are constantly working to develop engaging curriculum, provide effective professional learning, and engage students in showcasing their unique talents. Just a few celebrations from these offices are displayed here. Note the Visual Arts Team recently showcased student artwork at the Annual Neptune Festival. Art teacher Devon Miller from First Colonial High School was selected for Neptune Festival mural artist. And we have celebrated two State PE Teachers of the Year recently. Three schools have achieved the Tree Campus K-12 Designation from the Arbor Day Foundation. And for the fifteenth time, VB CPS has been awarded with the Best Communities for Music Education Designation for this national honor. Finally, gifted resource teacher Lizzie Samuelson from Indian Lakes Elementary School was selected as the 2024 Region Two Outstanding Teacher of the Gifted. And the last office we'll highlight this evening is the Office of Instructional Technology, led by Dr. Shubridge, which is also part of DETOL. This team includes the Digital Campus Team, who are constantly monitoring student growth and engagement and coordinating with school-based staff. The team ensures all instructional programs in Class Link are rostered and updated, and they respond to thousands of service desk tickets a year. Coordinators work hard behind the scenes to develop resources and ensure systems are running smoothly, but they're also busy co-teaching, co-planning, modeling lessons in schools, and providing high-quality professional learning to ensure our staff understand best practices for supporting academic standards, information literacy skills, and instructional technology integration. We are excited to share that we have five hundred sixty-five students enrolled in our Fall Semester for Digital Campus. Based on student needs, schools can request over forty-eight different options for students, from English to music appreciation. The Instructional Technology Coordinators process all service desk tickets, and within the first two weeks, we are proud that they closed over three hundred fifty-nine requests for support and answered over seven hundred fifty email responses. we are proud that they closed over three hundred fifty-nine requests for support and answered over seven hundred fifty email responses. We are also proud of the work of our ITS's and ITC team as they have worked hard to stay aligned and ahead of the state's new model policy for developing digital citizenship lessons to ensure our students understand the benefits of limiting their screen time and how to be safe and responsible online and using devices. All of the teams in Department of Teaching and Learning are dedicated to providing students with diverse opportunities and career pathway access, ensuring an exceptional academic experience is provided by our division. We are grateful for all of these specialists, resource staff, coordinators, psychologists, social workers, you name it, that make up this wonderful department. Here are a few of the many opportunities we offer to our community to help our students and their families navigate the journey and the resources available in our division to them. Give you a moment to take a look at some upcoming. And at this time, all of the wonderful directors I've mentioned are available with me to answer any questions you might have about our department.
As I'm waiting for that to pop up, I just want to say, a few weeks ago, we got Distribution Services, Custodial, and Transportation, and that was something that I said I was gonna carry with me everywhere, because you just don't realize what happens every day in this division. So this is another one that when someone says, "What do they do?", well, let me tell you, and more, right? And so, thank you for that. Ms. Rigs.
So I wanted to thank all of you guys. You've done such an amazing job, not only this year, but every year that I've been affiliated with Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and that's been a very long time, almost fifty years. Now, not all of you guys have been there for fifty years, and I understand that. But you are continuing the great work that Virginia Beach is known for. And I so appreciate it, and I wanted to make sure I said that before I leave the end of this term, which is December thirty-first. So thank you very much that you continue the work that needs to be done and that you're patient enough to wait for our votes and us to let you move forward. And so, thank you. You've done a tremendous service for our students, our families, and our community. And I just, I cannot say enough about how much you do, and I say it anywhere I can. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Rigs, uh, Ms., uh, I almost called you Ms. Rigs.
Madam Chair, I just wanted, uh, for the record, that Kathleen Brown is online via Zoom. And Ms. Brown, for the record, can you tell us the reason why you're Zooming and your location?
Hi, um, I am Zooming for personal reasons, and I'm in Virginia Beach.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, Ms. Anderson and then Ms. Owens.
And I concur with everything that Ms. Riggs said. Um, as I leave this board after twelve years, I feel that, um, the work that our staff does gives me confidence that, um, Virginia Beach will continue to succeed in the, uh, the school system that everybody in the state looks to. It's your work and your dedication that, um, makes me feel like the good work will carry on. And I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Is someone crying? Oh, oh, you did, oh. That's crazy.
Obviously, ditto, all of the accolades our department heads really moved, moved the division forward. Uh, I did have a question about the OPEC update. I was, um, guess pleased to see about the cyclical review. Uh, anything that we are being intentional in doing to improve our practices and to catch, areas that we can improve in is always a, a positive thing. Um, will that, uh, review result in a written report at, at some point, and do we know when that would be expected?
It should conclude at the end of the school year, and VDOE will provide that to us.
Okay. Wonderful. Oh, and, uh, while every department is awesome, I have been particularly impressed with and/or connected and drawn to our Student Support Services and, and all that they have been doing in the past. I guess I got on the board, but since the, the pandemic, just major, major steps forward. Really amazing, being a, a leader for our district, uh, and the area as a whole, our region, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, and next up, we welcome Mr. Jamison for Recovery School Update. Welcome, sir.
I'm gonna read part of this introduction and then share a little bit event that, uh, I fumble over my words. So, good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, Board Members and Dr. Robertson. This afternoon, I will update you on the continued developments of the Region Two Recovery Schools Steering Committee. My name is Robert Jamison, Executive Director for the Office of Student Support Services, father of three girls, youngest of which is not feeling well, so my day started at three fifteen this morning. So if there's any judgment.
This is a judgment-free exam.
Fatherhood is real. Um, this steering committee, as I'll be providing updates on our progress, is comprised of leadership from five Region Two Tidewater Area school divisions who have committed to exploring a recovery school. These divisions include Chesapeake, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and, and Virginia Beach. Each of the five school divisions has been dedicated to collaboratively developing all components of a proposal to present to their respective boards for both information and action prior to January thirty-first. As the work is in progress, my presentation will provide a thirty-thousand-foot view. The details will be provided in the actual program proposal document released for board information in January and in forthcoming workshop presentations. Let's begin by looking at the catalyst for this Region Two work, a commitment from our governor, the General Assembly, and our select Region Two superintendents. The General Assembly appropriated one and a half million dollars to be shared equally between Loudoun County and Virginia Beach City Public Schools to be used, as noted. Five hundred thousand dollars each for Year One for planning, and two hundred fifty thousand dollars each for Year Two for planning and implementation of a recovery school. VB CPS will serve as the fiscal agent for our superintendent's Region Two schools, and the funding is contingent upon December one planning and implementation updates in each of the two years. This year, the project coordinator will work with the VDOE, Virginia Department of Education, to ensure the first update is completed for December one. In providing this funding, the General Assembly has signaled their support for the need for recovery schools. Delegate Anne Farrell-Tata championed our funding, and note to the governor has signaled the same with Senate Bill seven twenty-six, which specifically requires school boards to create policies and procedures for opioid overdose prevention and treatment in schools. Governor Youngkin was quoted regarding the series of bills to combat the opioid epidemic. These bills are a testament to our continued efforts to address addiction and overdose prevention by raising awareness and much-needed resources. We will continue to follow every path, use every asset, and employ every bit of our shared will to combat this epidemic. This is my pledge to all Virginians. Beyond the General Assembly funding, the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority offers localities and regions several opportunities for funding, which I will introduce in this workshop. What I will not present in this update is budget information, as the budget is in active development. I'll provide a second update in December with more detailed budget and funding sources. A final budget will be included in our proposal, which will come to you for information in January. So using General Assembly funding from our Year One Planning Grant, a part-time project coordinator began working in early August. The project coordinator formed a regional steering committee to plan for the Region Two Recovery School, and the timeline was agreed on. Take a moment to view, and I'll discuss this timeline in just a few minutes. Okay. Before I discuss, I was remiss in not clarifying the role of the steering committee. As this school is not a recovery school for a single city or single school division, decisions are made collaboratively by the leadership of the five school divisions represented on the committee. Although Virginia Beach is the fiscal agent as determined by the General Assembly, they are among five who have input in the planning of the Regional Recovery School. In the first segment of the timeline, you'll see that the committee held its inaugural meeting in August and has met each month thereafter to plan and coalesce around planning all elements of a regional recovery school. You'll also see noted the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority. This term is also in the language of the General Assembly, which advised schools to seek the Abatement Authority funding to cover associated costs for the recovery school. Such funding is complex, as it represents over one billion dollars in multiple settlements assigned to the state via the Abatement Authority for distribution. Our project coordinator has attended multiple workshops, webinars, had one-on-one meetings with the Abatement Authority, and I'll report more on that shortly. The second segment below the line, which is what I'm doing now, is offering an update. I'll offer another update in December before information and action in January. The third, February, is contingent on board approvals from the five participating school divisions. If approved, participating superintendents will hire a program coordinator to continue the detailed planning of opening a recovery school. The current project coordinator will gradually release responsibility to the new program coordinator. In the fourth, below the line, March-May, additional hiring of clinical staff occurs, and in June, a teacher and teacher assistant will be hired as the final planning for an August one opening occurs. Now for our progress. I'll go through the highlights over multiple slides. The Regional Steering Committee has partnered with the Chesterfield Recovery School, the first recovery school opened in the state. Know that Chesterfield has, was the first to receive general funding or assembly funding and opened its doors to students three years ago. The only public, uh, recovery school in the state, Chesterfield welcomes the opportunity to gain a partner in recovery. Leadership from the five participating schools represented in the steering committee visited in September, touring the facility, speaking with students, observing the academic component, and learning about all facets of operations. VB CPS will continue to benefit from the experiences of the Chesterfield Recovery School. In collaboration with the VB CPS Department of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability, the Steering Committee added research and rationale to the formal program proposal, which will be provided to all boards as information in January. Here you see by school division, a compilation of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four discipline data on drug and alcohol-related referrals. As you view these data, recognize the size of each district is one factor which impacts the variance in numbers. For example, VB CPS is fourteen middle schools, while Suffolk Public Schools has five. And here is another. Short to catch your attention, pictured in this interactive map, you see the research from Virginia Commonwealth University illustrating the impact of the opioid epidemic on Virginia localities. Impact is measured by lost labor, healthcare, and crime. The per capita figure shows cost per person divided by the total population. In ascending order, Virginia Beach comes in at four hundred seventy-three dollars per capita, Chesapeake at five hundred dollars, Suffolk at six hundred ninety-six, and Norfolk tops the list at nine hundred eighty-three dollars per capita. To breathe life into the school and to bring it closer to a reality, the Steering Committee, over several face-to-face, several face-to-face, virtual, and one-on-one meetings, used a process to contribute names from each school division represented and reach consensus on the name you see here, the Harbor Hope Center. The name reflects the symbolism of the safety of a harbor and the hope for recovery for each student who will attend. Going forward this afternoon, we will refer to our recovery school as the Harbor Hope Center. The Harbor Hope Center will be housed in a Chesapeake City Public Schools building, the Educational Services Center, located at three sixty-nine South Battlefield Boulevard, Chesapeake. Chesapeake City Public Schools will provide classroom and office space for the Harbor Hope Center, lowering costs of our recovery school program. The proposed site currently houses CSEP on the second floor and on the first, the Adult Education and the Department of Technology. DOT will move out of the building in March, and the Harbor Hope Center will occupy several spaces vacated by them. Having a site away from the traditional high school has multiple benefits, chief among them minimizing the stigma associated with recovery. Another benefit of the Chesapeake location is the central proximity to the five participating cities. Using the school administration building for each city, the mileage to the proposed Harbor Hope Center location is eleven miles for Norfolk, eleven miles for Portsmouth, twenty-eight miles for Suffolk, and fourteen miles for Virginia Beach. Early work of the Steering Committee involved defining the purpose of the Harbor Hope Center. I'll give you a moment to read this purpose. Early work of the Steering Committee involved defining the purpose of the Harbor Hope Center. The Steering Committee recognizes recovery is a nonlinear process, and some students will remain at the center through graduation, while others will transition back to the home school. As I continue with the slide deck, the purpose will be further illuminated. There we go. It may jump too, but we'll see. Similarly, the Steering Committee created a mission to drive the work. The committee recognizes, as we hope you do, that once the school is approved by our boards and a program coordinator and clinical staff are hired, the Harbor Hope Center staff must work collaboratively to hone this mission statement. After all, a mission statement is what the staff must be willing to go to the mat for, and as such, the staff of the Harbor Hope Center must collaborate on their mission. The Steering Committee developed a program description as well. Give you a few minutes to read this, and please look up when you have done so, so I can begin to expound on this description. First, allow me to point out what the Harbor, Harbor Hope Center is not. It is not a comprehensive high school. It is not an alternative school placement, and it is not the local educational agency. It is a center open to all students in Region Two. While five school divisions have opted to join the efforts to plan and support the center, students in the remaining ten school divisions, although not in proximity and therefore unlikely to enroll, may attend based on a payment schedule from the sending school division, and an MOA which delineates the said payment will be established. As a point of reference, know that upon receiving the General Assembly funding, Dr. Robertson, Superintendent for Virginia Beach, solicited from all Region Two superintendents their interest in joining the regional planning. The five which I have noted earlier are those who expressed a commitment. Now, a few words about voluntary enrollment. I indicated a moment ago in my remarks that the Harbor Hope Center was not an alternative placement. All authorities on recovery align in the single assertion that recovery cannot be mandated. That said, school board hearing committees and courts may refer a family to the recovery school, but each student will go through the application process to determine their commitment to recovery. What I am saying is a school board hearing or court cannot place a student at the Harbor Hope Center. Recovery is a process, and readiness is key. The Harbor Hope Center Planning Committee dedicated planning time to developing goals and objectives for the program. On this page, you'll see the five goals of the Harbor Hope Center. You can take a short minute to read these, and I'll move on to a sample of the objectives and what those, what one will look like. So here's a sample aligned with each school division's plans to ensure students are future-ready. Note the measurable objectives. Note the measurable objectives. Recall, we are at the thirty thousand foot view, sorry, my mistake. Additional measures will be developed by the Harbor Hope Center staff, which might include anecdotal evidence, teacher and clinical staff observation, and interviews, to name a few typical measures. In a moment, I'll present you with the clinical and academic components. But first, here's the big picture of the six positions which the Harbor Hope Center Steering Committee will propose and present in the final budget. Job descriptions unique to the Harbor Hope Center have been created by the Department of Human Resources for Virginia Beach City Public Schools and the project coordinator, with the exception of the two clinical positions. The project coordinator is working to engage Chesapeake Behavioral Integrated Health in creating these with the request that Chesapeake Behavioral Integrated Health will also oversee and staff these clinical positions. I'll now detail the roles of the primary positions as I discuss the academic and clinical, clinical approaches. The academic classroom will blend student grade levels and abilities and will tailor programming to individual student need based on one or more of the components which follow. As I present, recognize a student may be concurrently enrolled in more than one of the three components. For example, a student may be enrolled in a multi-division online platform while also enrolling in credit recovery. The first component and primary mode of instruction is the multi-division online platform. Students will be enrolled in Imagine Learning, a state-approved MOP, which operates on a four-by-four schedule. Students may take up to eight courses in a year and although one hundred percent asynchronous, students will work with Harbor Hope Center staff in a face-to-face classroom with a teacher who will serve as the assigned mentor and students will have access to email, phone, or video to access their course instructor. Another component of the instructional plan meets the needs of students who previously failed a course and that is credit recovery. Students will have the opportunity to retake a course asynchronously again under the face-to-face facilitation of a teacher who will serve as the assigned coach. And lastly, the Harbor Hope Center will offer a General Education Development, or GED, for those students who given academic progress and age are unlikely to achieve a standard diploma. This GED program will be developed and modeled after Chesapeake Public Schools' GED program. Compared to traditional school counselors, the Harbor Hope Center's proposed clinical team can provide more focused and dedicated counseling and case management services using a true multidisciplinary approach, integrating peer support and evidence-based clinical practices. This clinical approach will be available to support students and families year-round. Like academics, the steering committee envisions both a flexible, interchangeable, and individualized schedule for academics and clinical components. Students at the Harbor Hope Center will participate in one to two thirty-minute individual sessions per week with an assigned licensed clinician and will, as need arises, be able to access clinical supports more frequently. In addition, all students at the Harbor Hope Center will participate in daily groups with diverse approaches to recovery, including psychoeducation, mental health, activity-based programming combined with discussion and processing components. Students and families will also be linked to local recovery and mental health community resources. The evidence suggests that a peer recovery specialist can help enhance treatment motivation and engagement, improve treatment retention, boost self-efficacy, and reduce recurrence rates. A peer recovery specialist is an adult who has recovered from substance abuse whose life experiences are impactful in supporting students in recovery. With this said, students will also participate in one to two thirty-minute sessions per week with a peer recovery specialist. The specialist will further maintain contact and offer support to students after graduation whereas they transition back to their home school. Please note what I am not presenting here is a daily schedule. The Harbor Hope Center Steering Committee will present that in the next update. It is in progress. What you see here provides an overview of how the school will operate while under the fiscal authority of Virginia Beach, but located in Chesapeake and serving students who are concurrently enrolled in the sending school divisions. Harbor Hope Center will operate on a modified year-round schedule, following the traditional calendar during the school year while continuing academic and clinical services remotely in summer months. As majority of staff will be on contract in summer months, staff will work virtually with students and where need arises can arrange to meet face-to-face with students and families. And students will follow the Chesapeake Holiday and Progress Reporting Calendar. Harbor Hope Center staff will accommodate the various school calendars for each school division. And lastly, there will be a rolling start and departure time as needed to address travel plans for each school division. However, with the tailored individual daily schedule and flexible clinical and academic components, it is anticipated this will have or present minimal challenge. Each division examined the framework for Harbor Hope Center and developed a transportation plan unique to the respective division. Costs associated with the plan will be shared when the total budget is completed and presented in January. Take a moment to see how each will transport students or each school division will transport students and know that in certain circumstances, students will be granted permission to drive. An example of a passenger motor pool is the use of white passenger vans to transport students in the event you had a question about that. The abatement authority was formed to oversee the distribution of settlement funds from drug manufacturers, distributors, and dispensers. Nationally, these funds represent the largest settlement of any legal settlement to date and said funds will continue through twenty thirty-nine. I've simplified here a very complex settlement and will continue to do so as I note the abatement authority offers three types of distinct grants. The use of any of these funds requires the state and locality to show a direct nexus to opioids. A recovery school is one, one such use of said funds and the Harbor Hope Center Steering Committee is working with their localities to request direct funds to support the startup of the Harbor Hope Center. In addition, some localities will utilize individual grants to support and our project coordinator is working on a coordinator partnership grant between the five cities participating in the Harbor Hope Center. This competitive grant requires matching direct funds from the respective cities and will be reviewed by the abatement authority in May. As with any school venture, community support is critical. Each division has catalogued unsolicited supporters, individuals, and groups who will lend support for the Harbor Hope Center. I have no doubt you will hear from these individuals and others when the program moves to information in action. Two, grants from the abatement authority require formal community support and so cataloguing and building early partnerships is a critical component. Here you see but one small snippet of community supporters who contacted Virginia Beach City Public Schools. In addition to the unsolicited support, the Harbor Hope Center Steering Committee is working closely with several state and local entities. Each division is collaborating with their local community services board and as the school be located in Chesapeake, a partnership, as noted before, with the Chesapeake Integrated Behavioral Health is blossoming. In addition, planners are working closely with the opioid abatement authority, BDOE, and the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. Work continues in progress and here I've highlighted the areas which the steering committee will complete prior to my next board workshop in December. It is these areas on which I will update the board in our December workshop and I'll give you a moment to read these before moving, moving to our next slide. As noted, I'll return to you in, in December for a final update and a workshop before each division presents for information in action in January. If approved in January, we'll adjust the budget should any of the five choose not to participate and will move forward with hiring a program coordinator or clinical staff so that the planning work of the steering committee and project coordinator can be transitioned to the very staff who will open the school. It has been a rewarding experience to work with the leadership of five cities to create a school which heretofore was only an idea in the minds of the general assembly, board, superintendents, and planners. Our pace is aggressive in the work of each, I'm sorry, reaching consensus with others has been a little demanding. I know I speak for all in the steering committee when I tell you we are exceedingly pleased with our progress and hope you are becoming as well. Today I provided a thirty thousand foot view. While I am only a member of the steering committee which completed the initial planning, the greatest knowledge resides with our project coordinator. Recall, this is a regional pla, a program and not the work of a single division and also recall as well, many of the details of the program will be developed by the actual Harbor Hope Center staff. I am prepared to take your questions today and where I'm, where I am unable to answer, I will work with the project coordinator to secure answers and update you. But I wanted to take a moment just to show the graphics on the slide. These are from the Virginia Department of Health Campaign, people who use drugs are real people. So stop the shame, stop the blame, and stop the stigma. I'm happy to take your questions.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Franklin. Thank you, Mr. Jameson, great presentation. And I'm going to follow and parrot a form, a, a school board member, Mr. Callan. Do you mind if I get those notes? That's, that was a lot of information and I, and I would love to get them and probably the rest of the board as well. So I'm just gonna, I do have four or five questions if that's okay. So if one school division, you had mentioned if one division decides it's not necessarily for them, how impactful do we find that will be to the budget of the Harbor Hope Center?
So we have to wait to see how the funds that we are working to secure play out. To truly answer your question.
So future question then, okay.
That was most everything on the list, was the next, the next step, but.
Okay, and then maybe this is a future as well. So in terms of the application process, is that, does it appear like it will be a lottery process? How, I guess I'm just curious what that looks like in terms of admission and how do we choose students? What criteria, is there any cost that will come roll down to the families and students?
So that was one question, you rolled four into it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'm being funny, of course. With that said, I want to answer one part of that. Our intention is for no cost to roll down to the family. The other pieces that you mentioned and I alluded to this in this, in the, the notes is the Harbor Hope Center staff will be determining the application process, the formal application process after they are hired. I can tell you with that information though, we have worked very closely with Chesterfield as well as with the accreditation, the Association for Accredited Recovery Schools to build out a lot of what we will be using, but that formal information will come later down, down the road.
Well, and that's kind of, because I know that we are using that as a model, that's why I wasn't sure if we have any kind of thoughts around that yet. And then obviously, since this would be housed in a Chesapeake location, then you know, that really would require academy students, kids that are participating in athletics. They, they would have to withdraw from those, from those programs and activities.
So one as a reminder, this is just an option for our families. I think any decision when it comes to choosing to pursue any program in particular, that you have to weigh pros and cons. So for the family whose student may be experiencing or going through recovery, I do believe that there's gonna be some value placed on that part of their experience. And so there are many things that we are working through in our discussions and that is part of our information that we will share when it comes to extracurriculars. It'll be in the program proposal in January for you to review. So I can share with you that's being discussed and you'll have more information to review at that time.
And, and lastly, and I'm sorry, I don't wanna hug the, hug the microphone, but is this something that like we have the gifted, we have our ODC or ODS. Is this something where we can have it stretch out beyond just Harbor Hope and have like, you know, satellite opportunities for those kids that might not want to leave the division? And so I mean, I'm just wondering if it can have legs and, you know, really find some other opportunities, kind of like we do with the gifted services.
I, I will tell you as we get this started, so I'll say one step at a time. In terms of opening this location, seeing the impact, learning some, I would say some of the unique just characteristics of our area in comparison to what Chesterfield has experienced, we would need to work through that for some time before we could really look at expanding. But I, I think if the demand is there, we have never shied away from any challenges in Virginia. We would look to meet needs.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens. All right, thank you. Um, I have a couple different questions. Lot of work being done, lot of work, which I anticipated that this would be a lot of work. I was hopeful initially when this idea started, the ball rolling, that we would get to action in December. That was my original understanding and I see that now we are in action in January where it'll be helpful obviously for the six board members who are definitely going to be here, but half of the board members, four to six of the board members are not gonna have heard any of the buildup, any of the process, have heard the questions behind it as they're making their decision. So I'm, I'm disappointed about, about that part though I understand that this is still probably moving at a very fast pace for all that needs to be considered. The slide that had the discipline related to drug and alcohol.
Slide five.
Yes, slide five. Do those numbers include students with vape infractions? Students who had vape in their, their bag, those kind of things?
In terms of the discipline referrals, just to confirm. The possession of just the vape or the substance itself, they, I would have to double-check with Department of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability to confirm. But we can get that total back to you.
Thank you, I'd be curious just if there are any, obviously we can't speak for the other school districts, but kind of what that breakdown of referrals may look like in Virginia Beach. How many of these are, somebody had a vape in their, their bookbag, somebody.
Right, beyond just possession of a.
Right, a nicotine product versus marijuana versus opioid type level things. The Harbor Hope Center, is that, is that an actual outside organization or is that just the name that we're coming up with for?
That was the name that was developed by the, by the steering committee.
Gotcha. The clinical staff that you mentioned, those positions would be staffed by the Harbor Hope Center.
Well, they'd be, the approach or structure that we're pursuing right now is that they would be staffed by Chesapeake Behavioral Integrated Health and placed at the Harbor Hope Center to where their community service board essentially would be responsible for the hiring as well as evaluation of those staff members.
Okay, and like the clinical coordinator, well, prior to board approving, will we know what the qualifications and, and background that we're looking to put in, in these roles?
Yes, we, we hope, based on some conversations that we recently had just as of yesterday, that the specific job title as well as job description would be available potentially in December, but definitely as part of the program proposal.
Okay, and then this might be further in the next presentation as well. I start getting too many questions and someone else has questions, just wave and I'll, I'll yield. Do we have a number about how many students we're expecting will be able to be served?
So in, again, proposed calculations, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to seventeen to begin for all five localities, just looking at Chesterfield, they start, they wanted to start with ten, they started with four. And it grew to where this past year and they each had a goal, as you can imagine, or had a goal for each year. And they passed their goal of getting to twenty-five in year three, well technically end of year two. Coming into year three, their goal is to get into the forties, if not forty-seven. I know that's kind of a random number, but they keep tracking that growth. So initially, from some of the calculations that you'll see, somewhere in the ballpark of fifteen to seventeen across the five participating school divisions.
Okay, and that would be the proposed initial kind of starting numbers though we would, we're not sure that we would achieve those numbers in the first year, we may have something significantly smaller to start off with. The, you mentioned the credit recovery portion of the academic model.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that face-to-face instruction or is that also, it's asynchronous?
That will be asynchronous but with access to a instructor in the room, staffed by the Harbor Hope Center, in addition to the structure that's in place for those programs where an instructor can be contacted by email or some other form of communication.
Okay, that was I think my, my question, that face-to-face, I guess, instructor in the room. So this is gonna be middle school and high school students. High school only.
Starting with high school.
High school, okay. A student needs to recover English twelve. Will the instructor in the room be an English teacher or it just a, a general ed teacher?
We are looking at different models for the response, I'll say for the requirements, licensure requirements for that staff person. But the goal is for primary instruction to be provided through that. But the goal is for primary instruction to be provided through that mult- multi-division online provider. So the teacher of record, so to speak, is through the provider. We will have support in the classroom to then ensure that they, they can access any kind of remediation or additional tutoring. Answer any specific questions on demand through that educator.
Gotcha, so more of a technical support because the person may not be a math teacher and it's a math class. Or might not be a Spanish teacher and the person speaking Spanish, so somebody who's saying, you know, pay attention to your screen, do you need help? Accessing and advocating how to ask the questions.
And I would just, as a reminder, as we move forward with many of the programs and supports we have in Virginia Beach. All of those same supports would be available to a student, whether it's tutoring or with the supports that we have through these staff that they could then access as well.
If other people have questions, I'll take a break and I'll come back into the line, okay.
Mr. Culpepper.
You're actually hitting all my questions, that's fine. Um, she actually did hit most of my questions, uh, so, uh, I think I'll just say this, um. Originally, in the, early on the brief, you said the target start date for the school is August and I have to admit, I thought initially that that was probably not achievable. But for a thirty thousand foot brief, there's a lot of great detail in here and you're a lot farther along than I expected, to be quite frank. And so I think August is, is very achievable. Uh, I think, I guess there's just one question left, uh, you used early on, you didn't say this is not an academic institution, you used another term, what was it?
That is not the local educational agency. As in, that will still, the responsibility, the student will fall to the school division that they are a part of.
Okay, uh, is that a reference to both the academics that are, that they're required to do as well as graduation standards, go back to the school that they came from?
Correct.
Okay. And I think I mostly caught, uh, Ms. Owens' question to answer what I was gonna ask, which is how much? It, it sounds like the, the teachers there are like, you just answered for her, are not necessarily teachers for those specific classes. So reaching back to their homeschool is where they're getting the actual support from, directly from the teacher who's teaching that course, is that right?
So they'll have, it'll be through that multi-div- division online provider, so they have resources through the provider. Then they'll have resources in the classroom, we of course, no way to predict the future as to who we hire, what their, their licensure or their. Can't even speak today, like I said. Brain dead re- real, um, but depending on the area that they have, uh, their area of expertise can provide support, whether that's mathematics or. Language arts or English, we shall see, could even be special education, we'll see how that plays out. But they will have access to multiple supports, but again, the multi-division online provider does have an instructor. That that student can access for support, should they have additional questions, they'll have staff in the room to support them.
Mr. Jameson, since the, since the, um. The home is in Chesapeake, is Chesapeake a fiscal agent?
No, Virginia Beach is a fiscal agent.
Okay. The other, the other question I have is, and this might be the next time. You mentioned that a student who really loves the program and feels they need to stay, stays. But what happens for the waiting list of students who want to get into that? Does that take away the opportunity for somebody else?
So what, answering the question from Ms. Owens before was more of establishing the floor. We have not established what the max would be, so we'd have to see how things play out. In terms of how we would allow more students to come in, before I can tell you that there would definitely be a waitlist. That's, again, not the intent to have a waitlist, just depends on the demand from our areas as to how that would function, but.
Yeah, I have so many questions about criteria and, um, budget. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be hard to wait till. Till the next one, but yeah, a million questions, alright, Ms. Weems.
Thank you, and I, I wanna take, thank Dr. Robertson and you, Dr. Jameson, and also Dr. Solner. As well as the other, um, four school division representatives that have worked so hard on this. Um, I agree with Mr. Culpepper, you've done so much, you know, and still we have a lot of details. But as far as just, there's so much here and I really do appreciate that. Probably some of my favorite things that I just wanna point out to my colleagues is first of all. That, um, this will be in an actual school building. I've done research over a lot of these recovery schools and have visited some. And I've seen some that are in trailers behind a church, office buildings. Uh, part of a house, and so, so the fact, and again, that just kinda adds to the stigma. In hospitals, you know, somebody had mentioned, why aren't they in, you know, therapeutic hospitals? So the fact that this is in a school building, um, is enormous. Because these kids don't feel like they're just so odd and so different and they can't be in a school building. They're not, and then the other thing is. So until now, and stuff we're doing now is not really working, I think we can see that across the whole nation, across the state. But until now, you've really had to choose between recovery or education. And, and like, but, Dr. Jameson said, this is gonna be a choice. But I know so many families have given a choice to go to this school and maybe have to give up baseball or something. That choice is a lot nicer than sending your child to Utah or to Florida or to another country. Which is happening with our Virginia Beach students. I can't, the list is too long for me to even say how many people I know who have had to send their children off to another state. Just for, for recovery, for rehabilitation and for treatment. Um, away from the family and away from their education, and so they've had to go to GED when they, when they returned. So the option there is fantastic and to have in a school building just helps with the stigma piece. And so I appreciate, thank you, our, our, um, neighbors from Chesapeake for having the space available. And for, um, for offering that too, financially that is such a, um, big savings, um, of course. Another thing that I think is so important to this piece is the peer recovery specialist and. And for you who are not familiar with this world, for these students to be able to talk with someone who has been there, done that, recovered, is now successful. That's enormous, this is absolutely enormous. I think that this is just a great thirty thousand view draft. I look forward to, um, some details, but I'm very proud to be in a school system. Who is moving forward with this, who's gonna, um, make this happen because we know definitely a hundred percent the need is there. Um, so I look forward to, um, to casting my positive vote for this. On a side note, Harbor Hope Center, I love that name, I absolutely love that name. Um, because years I've been just trying to do certain things and think of names and I've got a nonprofit with names. And, and I've gone through so many names and, um, he- hope has always been one of the names. And then when I saw this, I'm like, the word hope is in there, yay, so, but I really do like that name and I think that, um. And, and the symbol and all that stuff, so I appreciate all your help. I look forward to some more, um, answers and, and again, if colleagues have questions, we may email them to you before our next meeting. So if you have questions, please email them to, um, Dr. Jameson.
Follow the appropriate protocol to include whom else needs to be included and I will certainly assist.
It's always good if you please, um, include Cheryl Woodhouse at a minimum. Yeah, okay, Ms. Rex.
I just wanted to, um, ditto what Ms. Weems said, I, when I saw help in, in that name and harbor. I'm thrilled with that name, I think it's really good, this is a great presentation and, um, sorry, I won't be voting on it. But, um, you guys have done a lot of great work, so I, I love that name.
Ms. Owens.
I, I do wanna yield to other folks, but if, if there's nobody else in the queue and we have a few minutes before break, I. Okay. Do we know, and this might not be a, a Dr. Jameson question, but do we still currently have special education vacancies? In our district, uh, from the beginning of the school year? Yeah, okay. I do have a little bit of a concern about the fact that we haven't been able to fill our special education vacancies. That our students, um, are, are needing. And we're going to start additional programs that require specialized vacancies when we're not currently meeting the need. That we have the vacancies for in our dis- in our district, so I think that's something. That I guess we, we just have to consider, uh, as we do this. We have vacancies that we currently can't fill with the programs that we've already committed to. I like that the committee is coming up with some, uh, goals of what. What it's hoping to be, uh, achieved. And they are goals that I in general hope for, for, for all of our students. Is there a discussion on how the goals will be measured or how success will be measured with this program?
Well, again, with some of the input, technical assistance that we received from V D O E as well as V B D. Anyway, Virginia Beach Department of Virgen- Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, there are some measures that we can look at. I mean, one of the biggest pieces will be student achievement, student attendance, um, any kind of relapse. All of those pieces are part of the data that we have seen, um, there's set data criteria that are from, that are already established. By the Association for Accredited Recovery Schools, so we're leaning into all of those pieces to determine what the final criteria or measures will be. In, uh, for the Harbor Hope Center.
Um, I, I noted that goal number three, um, which is something that I certainly support. For all of our students, that's, uh, support and strengthen students' mental and social emotional health while, uh, in the program. I know we measure that many different ways, uh, within our district, including some of the, the surveys that go out. You know, there's been a lot of pushback on surveys about social emotional health. And so I wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page, if that's how we are gonna continue to, uh, measure success on that goal. In one program and, uh, kind of across the, the span of our division. I think the other questions will probably be better as a, an email. And I will send it across the, the chain to get it over to you, but I, I definitely appreciate. The work and compromise and just, uh, coordination that I know has gone into this thus far. Thank you, Dr. Jameson.
Thank you, I must say, I am not a doctor, at least not yet, so I appreciate the upgrade. But I wanna be honest, being that we're on a form- in a formal setting, mister is fine and I appreciate all of the feedback today, thank you so much.
Perfect, now I don't feel bad, cause I was like, oh, I was never calling him Dr. Jameson before, that was just so disrespectful, let me jump on it.
It is reported that you spent the night at a Holiday Inn though.
So, Mr. Jameson, um, I think the board does have a lot of questions. And so I'll make sure when we do agenda planning that we reserve plenty of time. Because I think we've all made it clear that we've got a lot of questions in the queue. So, um, I appreciate all, all of your hard work and, uh, Dr. Robertson.
Yeah, so, um, one of the things we've tried to do is, uh, update you in, in multiple ways. So after every one of the Steering Committee meetings, you get a summary of what happened in that meeting. At the end of every month, when I give you a month summary of what we've done, Ms. Woodhouse includes a, an additional summary about what's. Anything that's happened between the summary of the meeting on the fifteenth and when you get my report around the thirtieth. You know, Ms. Owens asked a really good question, why December, why December versus January? Working with five other school divisions is a challenge. Because it's just a challenge. So in creating a schedule, the committee determined that they could commit one day a month. Uh, for a few hours to, to work on this process, which is while all the meetings are on are about the fifteenth of the month. And in doing so, while all the divisions are in the same situation, we are trying to determine what funding is gonna be avail- available next year. The opioid abatement process is fascinating because everybody's learning at the same time. We may be farther along on understanding about opioid abatement, how to access funds than the people who are giving us the funds. Uh, so we're highly confident. Uh, and the amount of money that's out there, the conversations we've had, you'll be very pleased when we can get in front of you with numbers. But we, much like Mr. Freeman will say, I can't do back of the napkin math with you, you're gonna have to just, the budget stuff you are not going to see. Look before December tenth. And, but probably December tenth, it'll be done from a budget standpoint. But until then, hold that question, cause I can't answer it.
Yeah, and that's the tough part, especially as Ms. Owens pointed out that we for sure have four new board members coming in. And this is information that unless they're watching, they have no clue. And so they'll be, you know, voting on something they know nothing about, it's like evaluating. You know, um, the superintendent when you haven't served under him, so it's, um, that's, that's tricky. So we will have a lot of questions, I'm sure, did you wanna say anything?
I'm sure that, that some of us will be glad to meet separately with our new board members and go over everything in very close detail. To make sure that they're voting on something that they do know a great deal about, thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll meet with them, I'm sure that we can bring them up to speed, thank you.
Okay, so it is five twenty-four, I'd say we go into closed session for a minute, but it would take us too long just to read to go into closed session. So with that, um, we are adjourned at five twenty-four and we'll reconvene at six o'clock. And please remember, we have an elementary school that will be singing the National Anthem this morning.